Just letting everybody know that we are live on my end.
Good evening, everybody that just jumped on.
Good evening. Howdy.
Good evening, Mary, take roll please.
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wesson?
Here.
No additions or deletions to the agenda, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, consent agenda, anything on the list that you'd like to pull out and talk about first?
So I just had one quick question, maybe it's just the, if you look at the fire, the fire inspections, one of them is marking yes for do you have exposed wires and the other was marking no. So just maybe that question needs to get cleaned up a little bit.
I saw that Brian earlier today, haven't had a chance to talk to the chief yet, but yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I think they're totally both fine, I think they're just to interpret the questions.
I agree.
Motion to accept the consent agenda be in order?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those, motion carries. The city engineer is not here this evening, Ryan, did he give you anything? You're not coming through, Ryan.
Yeah, you're on your buddy.
Thank you, my apologies. Yes, I do have something from an engineering perspective and that's a quick update on St. Andrews Drive. I think Kevin last reported that we were hoping to have that road open next Monday, unfortunately with the rain that's projected this week, we had a progress meeting this morning and it's doubtful that it will be open on Monday, we're still hopeful that it'll be later, later that week or early the following week when we'll have it open. And by that I mean both the sidewalk and the street and we've been talking regularly with clear, with the principal and the superintendent at Clear Creek, so they're all aware of the situation.
Any questions about those? Okay, Ryan, what do you have for a report?
Few other things of note, if you haven't had an opportunity yet, I would encourage you to drive by the fire station. A few weeks ago, we put a new coat of paint on that entire building and then last week installed new doors. It's really looking sharp and matches, I think anyway, and I think the chief would agree, matches the police station next door, so it looks really nice. The Iowa League of Cities Conference is being held next week and that's obviously going to be a virtual event. I would encourage you to take a look at their website, there's still opportunity to sign up for, even if it's just one class or multiple classes or workshops. If you're interested in anything, just send me an email, let me know which sessions you'd like to participate in and I can get you signed up, I think the mayor and I are signed up and I got a note from Chris today that he'll be attending some events, so again, if you see something that interests you, let me know and we'll get you signed up. From a storm cleanup, update, we, Michael informed me that we've officially made four trips around the city and have now that finalized our pickup throughout the community. Our, our brush site will actually be open yet this week. I think when I spoke to some of you earlier in the week, I mentioned that that was also closed, that was my mistake. We are going to have that open until the 14th, so folks can continue to bring brush down there. We then will have to close it up, do the measurements and get bids for grinding so that all that can be submitted to FEMA for reimbursement, so that that process I think has went relatively smoothly and I think you'll see in Michael's report that he reached or had a special note of thanks for many folks who helped with, with cleaning up the community. I echo his comments and I know he was super, very grateful for, for all those folks that were able to help. The last note I have on for tonight is regarding the CARES resolution and you might recall, we approved a resolution two weeks ago that, that basically authorized the city to collect up to $460,000 in CARES reimbursement funds through the state. We've made our first submittal there in the amount of about $260,000. And that covers expenses from March through July and then we'll make another submittal here later in the year for, I believe it's August through October, so we hope to request all of those funds that have been authorized and we'll keep you posted on that. And that's what I have for this evening.
Any questions for Ryan?
Ryan, is there any stump grinding that has to take place after the tree removal? Has that been done or is that something that has to come next?
I'm, I, I can't answer that specifically, I, other than saying I believe there is, we've, we went through and marked a number of trees and throughout the community, both Guy and Michael were doing that, that the trees that'll have to come down and I and those are of course in the right of way and when those come down, we'll have to do some sort of grinding to get that stump out of there. And that work will be done by a private contractor.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor's report, I think the Extreme Arena invitation is for this Thursday night, those who can attend, please do so. Also want to thank everyone who could participate in the virtual ribbon cutting for the police station very recently. Nice facility, I hope at some time in the future you can take the opportunity to walk through it. The next item on our main agenda is cliff jumping sheet subdivision, preliminary and final plat. Application presentation. Anyone representing that?
Yes, hi, John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant for the subdivision. It's a application to take an existing property that's at lot seven and the north part of lot six and re-subdivided into two lots. The existing house that's located on lot one would remain along with the garage. I believe he might have some intention to possibly rebuild that garage. That's not part of this application. This would also create then a, an additional lot to the east, lot two. Sanitary sewer, sanitary sewer service and water service will be provided immediately to the north from Cherry Street. I would have access to the alley on the east. It would be, it's the same zoning that's already existing, which is RS eight. They could fit a similar, similar sized house as the one that's already existing on the lot immediately to the west. And I'm available for any questions, if anybody has any questions.
Questions for John?
Is, is the plan then to put another house there?
Yeah, the, the plan is that he could sell it, he doesn't have any, I don't believe he has any intent to immediately turn around and request a building, apply for a building permit, he might be able to sell it or, or build himself in the future, he just wants to create that additional property with a similar building footprint or something that would be comparable to the existing building that's already there.
Mr. Rusnick?
I don't know how much more I have to add, but here's an aerial photograph that shows the existing residents in garage. This would be the west lot that he was referring to, this would be the east lot that would be vacant. There's a zoning map that, that shows the RS eight zoning as well as the other zonings in the area. The one thing that I found interesting about this property is the Cherry Street corridor is designated as commercial. I think this needs to be reexamined, particularly with some of the branding that we did, so city administrator Ryan Hire and I will be talking a little bit more about just how we examine that, I'm, I'm just not sure that there's a tool in the comprehensive plan toolbox to accommodate that, so we might have to bring something new to kind of fit more of what we're envisioning for this area as becoming and it will become in the future, so that doesn't prevent this from moving forward, comprehensive plans or advisory, but just to give you a heads up that we do think we need to reexamine what this corridor looks like on the future land use. Here's preliminary plat, shows the improvements. And then the final plat looks very similar.
Any questions for Ryan? If not, you have resolution number 2020 dash 68. Resolution approving the preliminary plat and final plat for the Cliff Jumping Sheep Subdivision, North Liberty Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any final discussion or questions?
Ryan Hire, is there, is there any, anything from staff as we look at this Cherry Street future vision that needs to be said here as we vote?
I don't think so. Ryan Rusnick did a, I think, mention that it's something we'll continue to, to look at. But we think it fits well with, with what's there now and we think it can fit well with, you know, what, what will be in that area in the future, so other than that, I don't think there's anything else to add.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mary, would you take roll please?
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
I'm sorry, didn't catch that.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed, John, you have any questions?
No, thank you very much council members and Mr. Mayor.
Okay, going on Casey's Marketing Company's site plan, applicant's presentation. Who's representing Casey's?
Nick Halfhill, Casey's General Stores, One Convenience Boulevard, Nankany. Would you like me to share my screen for a drawing or no?
If you would, please. Yes.
Okay, I'm endeavoring here. Okay, if you can see the drawing that I have in front of me.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a 1.5 acre, 1.5 acre site along Highway 965 and Westwood Drive. There's a couple businesses there today, this is, I think it's about a half mile south of the existing Casey's. So we're redeveloping that with a 4160 square foot Casey's General Store. There are six dispensers out front in this canopy area. And what we have here is a, we've worked with staff extensively to get a building designed suitable to their liking for the area. We've added some of the different colored brick features along with this building to break that up a little bit, we've added, the glazing in front here is a little bit bigger and then the glazing along the south side that faces the side street there. These, this glazing here wouldn't exist on a prototype building, so that's an additional step up to help fit in and it looks pretty nice, our landscape architect did a, the building's a little bit different in this, but this is a general view, takes into account the city's streetscape plans that are going on in the area. Additional right of way there that's going to be given. And then you can see that there's quite a bit of landscaping and green space around the building, the way it laid out well. And if I can find my plan again. So this is a grading plan, you can see out front along the highway that the way the site falls, there's storm sewer that runs along here in the side yard, but it catches up really out front, so there'll be detention, there's not detention on those sites today existing. So with our redevelopment, we'll add that detention there. I think we've worked pretty well with staff, appreciate all their efforts towards this, so if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to. And I will stop sharing.
Questions for Nick? Annie?
I've got two Nick, on the plan and maybe I just, can you point out two things, one, where the dumpster is and what way the doors to get into the dumpster face on your screen, please?
I sure can, I'll go back to sharing that.
Thanks, now moving on mine.
Okay, let me find the best page to landscape plan, it's a little less messy, so the dumpster is actually behind the store in this area and the, the doors face to the north, internal to the site. There'll be landscaping around this side and this side. There's, what was the second question, I'm sorry?
So that was one, thank you, and then two, and I know, I think we, we had a question earlier on this, but where, is there a bike rack on your plan?
There is not a bike rack, we're not opposed to putting them in, they don't typically do that until they find out that there's a, a demand from the neighborhood. But, and I, I was, I think staff mentioned that in an email earlier today. So typically we'd let the customers kind of tell us along the way, there's, there's space. The way this lays out, there's probably a good spot for a bike rack to the south of the store. If it, I know there's going to be a trail out here, so you know, hopefully we can get that type of customer using the store and then obviously there's a lot of residential to our west and north. So I don't think we're opposed to it at all, it's just deciding that, that final element of how many do you need, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be something, we try to incorporate that. And obviously, you know, my colleagues, we can all chime in here, but I think that's something Nick, we're just trying to encourage with development in our community, we have different options for people to transport to your store.
Sure, well, we want to give them any opportunity for sure, so.
Any other questions for Nick? Mr. Rusnick?
I'm not sure I have much to add, I think Nick did a good job of kind of going through it, I would say that, as he mentioned, so we, we did work together pretty well and I think they took into consideration some of the comments that we had, that we were looking for a bit more elevate, elevation in design, just because we are making a substantial investment in Rancho Way and so they, they kind of responded with the multi-color use of brick as we mentioned and some additional glazing, so we were able to coordinate with kind of the design we're doing on Rancho Way, so I think this is a, a, this would be a great redevelopment parcel and it'll fit kind of with the masonry city building that we've been kind of doing in this and this building is virtually 100% masonry and we echoed in the brick columns and the sign as well as the dumpster enclosure would be a brick as well, so staff did recommend the approvals of the planning commission and there were three conditions that are in the resolution pertaining to light over at the west portion of the property adjoining the lots and, and another minor condition, so with that, I'd be answering any questions.
Any questions for Ryan?
Yeah, Russ, it was discussed at the P and Z meeting and I know there was a comment in our packet as well and Kevin's not here, so could you do your best to help us to understand what's been studied for the traffic count there along Westwood Drive? Kevin mentioned during the P and Z meeting that it would be that as part of the Rancho Way expansion, there would be traffic resignaling and then also a turning lane added there at Westwood Drive. Along with that understanding, has there been any, have there been traffic counts conducted on this? I, I, while I'm not going to push aside scientific traffic counts, it seems tough to understand how that intersection is not going to be a mess with two-way traffic, has it ever been discussed to do something similar to what we have going on at Come and Go out by 380 and having a one-way entrance off of Westwood and then everybody come off of, excuse me, Sugar Creek Lane to exit the, exit the site?
Well, we haven't gotten that specific with those conversations, I can tell you that, you know, based on the size of development and what's existing, you know, it doesn't necessarily warrant a traffic analysis, so, so we did not request one. We did pull the driveway entrance a little bit back to line up with fairway. Right now, there is not a dedicated left turn lane here. So what we are proposing to do with the Rancho Way improvements is to add that turn lane and fix the signalization, so what Kevin and I talked about is we think, we think that'll be a, a good solution to any issues that would be caused up here.
Okay, is there, is, is that, is that part, is that an ongoing discussion or something that we can talk more about or will there be an opportunity to enhance that or make any alternatives to that after this approval tonight?
Well, I think we're always willing to look at traffic if, if we see that, you know, development is creating so much traffic that is causing a traffic problem here, absolutely, we'll look at that. I think just based on the size of the store, you know, it's, it's a smaller footprint store, so I think Casey's really analyzed kind of what, what the need is for a size of the store, so it's a, it's a smaller to a medium sized store, so you wouldn't expect, you know, as much traffic is here, it's a much larger footprint building. We're always happy, always happy to look at these issues if they become a problem.
All right, awesome, well, like I said, I trust the process, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I've got one more for Nick.
Please.
Are you able to share with us and, and those watching what the plan is for the existing Casey's just north of this property?
If, if I knew right away, there, I don't know what the exact plan is, obviously they'll, it is intended that this site replace that site, that much I do know. And typically those sites are not, they will remove the tanks, will remove the canopy and all that type of equipment from there and get it back into a suitable state for a future user. Beyond that, I, I don't know the plan. But that is typically, and as you might imagine, we, it won't be another C store if we sell it to someone. You know, a competitor like that. But beyond that, I don't know the exact outcome.
Thank you.
Nick, when do you think you guys would start?
It's, uh, spring, I think is, is the answer on that one, I, I'm trying to look for a calendar, I don't think it's this year, I apologize, I'm believing or not, this is a couple months in here, so I'm getting up to date with their calendar still. But because of Iowa and our, our, obviously winter's coming, these are about a four-month build, give or take the weather, so it's a question if we could get in there and there's some, there's obviously existing businesses there that need to make their plans as well, so it's likely spring.
You have before you resolution 2020 dash 69. A resolution approving the development site plan for 600 Westwood Drive and 230 Sugar Creek Lane for Casey's General Store, North Liberty Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, final discussion or questions?
Mr. Halfhill, on behalf of our council and citizens, please pass along our thanks for your company's continued trust in keeping your business here in North Liberty, it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Mary, take roll.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Nick, any final comments you'd like to make?
Appreciate your staff and all of you for taking your time, thank you.
Thank you for attending this evening and good luck to you.
Thanks.
We appreciate you kind of spicing that up a little bit, making it look nice.
Appreciate that.
Next item we have on our agenda is Rancho House Project Phase Two. Discussion, possible action on removing from table. Anyone wish to establish a motion to remove from table, please?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
The seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those, motion carries, it is now on the table. Off the table, so you have again resolution number 2020 dash 66. Resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the Rancho House renovation, Phase Two Plan, North Liberty Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion or questions?
Ryan, I'd like you to just to detail the changes here from last meeting in this one for those that are watching, please.
Sure, and also on the, on the phone is Alan Weeskamp from Shive Hattery, so I might ask him to chime in too, but essentially the resolution is approving the contract with Wolf Construction, but it also talks about the deduct that'll be forthcoming with an official change order in the amount of just $32,000 and some change. And really what the, the deduct consists of is two pieces, two significant pieces anyway, one is the lead base paint requirement and we've made some changes there and that's where I'll ask Alan to, to chime in. And then the other is with some trim that we actually have on hand, we've actually been able to get from a different older home in the area that the contractor thought they were going to have to make from scratch and that turned out to be a pretty significant savings as well. And Alan, could you maybe provide a brief overview of those, those two items for the council?
Sure, can everyone hear me, I want to make sure my connection's good?
Yes.
All right. So to Brent's question, we met with the contractor on site, he, he was very accommodating, as was his painter to come out and we, we kind of revisited the, the house, we did a walk to come out and we, we kind of revisited the, the house. We did a walkthrough and looked at things that maybe weren't clear as far as what was lead containing and what wasn't and maybe a little question on their part as far as what OSHA requires for either the abatement or the containment of that lead paint. So where we ended up was modification of their, of the amount of painting and abatement that they had figured. One was the interior is clean, doesn't have any lead-based materials in it. And with the sort of an agreement between the general contractor and the painter as far as how much siding they were going to demo and whether that needed to be abated when they removed it from the house, which it does not, it can all just be pulled off the house and go to landfill. So we saw a double savings there in the understanding of what the OSHA regulations were. Also, I think they it was good for them to get onsite and, and walk the house as, as you may remember from the past meeting. Our pre-bid was the day after the storm event. So we, we only had one electrician show up. So I think it it was beneficial for them to walk the house and, and and ourselves to be able to explain the amount of work there, especially I appreciate Guy taking time out of his day to, to make it over there to explain the whole trim thing and all the pieces that he had. He actually had them in the house at that point. So they did an inventory and, and he explained where it came from and, and how the trim matched. So I really appreciate his, his efforts and I, and I think it paid off with, with the credit that Wolf Construction is willing to, to provide the city.
Other questions for Alan?
Mayor?
Yes.
So Alan first, thanks for going through all that in a pretty short order time. Appreciate it. Obviously as a council, we're just trying to do all of our due diligence here. Do you think Alan, like I'm just sitting here thinking, what if we hadn't asked the question in our last meeting? Do you think this is absolutely everything that could be sort of reduced from a cost perspective? And how do we know that?
Actually, I'd like to jump in, in there if I could. From a, this is what we were going to do regardless of tabling it. This is, so you might recall when we approved the police station project, we went back and did similar work. So whether we tabled it or not, this work was going to be done. We were going to come back with this deduct. As I understood it, the council just wanted more of a concrete number before they approved the, approved the project.
Okay, Henny?
Okay, Alan, anything else to add or that was?
No. So just for the due diligence, we did go through line by line with Wolf and, and try and under, understand where he came from with his numbers. And to be honest, I don't, he was very forthcoming and explained where they all came from and I am content that we're getting a pretty good deal with the, with these numbers.
Okay, thanks, Alan.
Alan, I just had one question for you. Do you have a sense on how soon this could get started and how soon it might be usable for us? There's outside landscaping and parking lots that have to be done. That'll probably, that may not get done yet before winter hits us. Or is it going to be a usable building this winter yet for us?
Yes, I believe based on what Brian tells me, he has his crew is coming off a larger project for City of Iowa City Schools. And they are ready and willing to jump on this and he believes the, the concrete work can get done yet before snow flies. What he was to check on for Kevin, and I don't know if he's gotten back to Kevin yet, is about the installation of the permeable pavers. Kevin may be able to address that when he gets back from vacation.
Terrific. I'll just add again that this has been such a long time coming for this home, for this city, for this project. And I couldn't be happier that we're about to get this underway and let this home finally be usable to the city in, in a lot of different capacities. So I appreciate everyone doing their part to make that happen.
I agree, Chris. It, it has been a long time, well before my time. But this has been an incredibly expensive project. And in my opinion, one that had we been able to look in the crystal ball and look to see what it would was going to cost in the end, probably should never have started in the first place. It feels like we have we're, we're over the edge where we can't turn back is my feeling. I agree with you that it's more than time to have this thing start producing something for, for us, for the cost that's put into it. I guess either Ryan or Alan, has there been discussion on some sort of signage where it will show the history of the house so we can really capture the true history and, and be able to showcase that on the exterior of the home. So somebody doesn't have to go into the home to see it or appreciate it or pay to go in or anything like that, that you can walk by and, and read and see and feel it and you know, you see where I'm, where I'm going with that?
Yeah, I do. And, and you see that a lot in some of these historic type facilities across the country. We've talked about it internally, Brent, with Guy and Tracy and I, but we just don't have a plan for it at this point. So that'll be something that will be out there and hopefully something we can find some grant type funding for, but we haven't, we haven't made any movement on it.
I, I want to be clear. Having contention with the cost of the project should not take away from the beauty and the history that comes with the home and the property. And I will, I would, you know, hope that we can really showcase that now.
And I would just want to piggyback on that.
Brian?
Oh, I think it's very important that we showcase that history aspect of it because the time and effort that has gone in, into this and you know, not to forget how costly it is. It only makes sense to do that. And I am, I mean, being here for what 13, going on 14 years of seeing that house sit there. And I think every year I was asking what are we wanting to do with it along with other people in the community? I think it's pastime for, for some kind of activity to, or utilization of the house to happen. Unfortunately, it is coming at a higher ticketed price than we were expecting, but hopefully we can capture that and have a more concrete plan moving forward in terms of usage and how to highlight that historical aspect as well.
Some of this cost,
Go ahead.
Some of the, some of the cost of this is the parking lot that we didn't put in when we didn't, we decided not to tear it down and gave over it. So some of that is catching up to us a little bit. We would have spent some of that money anyway and stuff. And you know, you, you don't often get a chance to save history. And so much of North Liberty is, is pretty new. And I think, you know, trying to keep a little bit of something that what was where there when North Liberty really started out, I think is important. So.
Any more comments?
I think just one more, Mayor. So I think this, well, sort of expressed it in different ways. It's kind of an emotional, I think, agenda item for some of us. It has been a long time coming. For some looking at you, I don't know why. But, and we have spent a lot of money. So right, Ryan, I just want to clarify, this is the last sort of payment at least at this point to make it operational, correct?
Yes, that is correct. With the understanding that it's an old house, it's going to require, you know, maintenance. And then of course the signage we talked about earlier, but yeah, to make this operational, get someone in there, get, you know, hopefully our social service organizations in there, this should do it.
Yeah. So I think that's really important just publicly. So we know that this is the last sort of piece. I do think it'd be important just we can, I would like to know the, the grand tally. You know, in the future here, what everything did cost to make this operational. And I know we don't have a, a set plan for those nonprofits, but hopefully that becomes solidified soon just so we can, people can utilize this space because that's really what it's meant to be is for our community. So looking forward to the day of our first tenant or, or organization in that space.
All ready to vote? Mary, take a roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
A very grateful aye. Thank you, guys.
Solution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Alan, let's get to work.
All right. Thank you, council. I really appreciate it. And I think we'll have a wonderful project for you when it's all said and done. Brian looks forward to getting, Brian Wolfe looks forward to getting started and I'll let him know tomorrow morning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alan.
Next item on our agenda is the second consideration of ordinance number 2020-12, ordinance amending chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located at 1475 South Jones Boulevard located in North Liberty, Iowa to those set forth in municipal code of RS4, Single Unit Residence District. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discuss your questions? Mary, please.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Item 12, LJP Resoning Request. This is the second consideration of ordinance 2020-13, an ordinance amending chapter 167 North Liberty, North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property at 205 West Penn Street located in North Liberty, Iowa to those set forth a municipal code for the RSO, Single Unit Residence Special Use District. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Brian or Russ, have there been any other comments or questions received on this property since our last meeting?
Nope, no, there haven't. The only thing I wanted to bring up was council wastiness if the upstairs could be used for residential, the city attorney and I did discuss that. There's nothing in the ordinance that would prevent the use of that upper floor. So my understanding, the property is currently configured, configured as a lower level would be the office in the upper floor. It could be a residential rental unit or, or something like that.
Second floor only?
Well, I, I guess it depends on building codes of how it's oriented. So I, I don't, I don't view this as being, let me answer you this way. I don't view this as being like a multifamily residential with an office component. So it could have like one additional residential unit.
Okay. Any other questions? Mary, take a roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Uh, Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Item 13, Assessment Resolution, Resolution Number 2020-70, a resolution assessing delinquent amounts owed to the City of North Liberty, Iowa to individual property taxes. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mary, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Solution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next item is the Southwest Growth Area Utility Project. Resolution Number 2020-71, Resolution authorizing crop damage settlement agreement with Curtis Bowen. Ryan, you want to just do a brief overview on that?
Good. I defer to Grant on this one.
Grant?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
So we bought, the, the city as part of that project bought permanent, permanent and temporary utility easements across several farmsteads. And we had a, two of those properties had, were being farmed by Mr. Bowman with an, with an oral lease that wasn't recorded. Normally if there's a lease of record, we would just reach out to the, to the tenants and cut him a check as part of the acquisition of the easement. He didn't get paid as part of that because those leases weren't recorded. And then later on, requested, you know, raised the issue. And so in order to make sure that he's compensated for the city's intrusion onto his rental property, just like we, we would do for anyone else, he's entitled to the value that he lost, but for the, for, but for our use. Now, he did, there were some questions that were raised concerning his choice to plant the area beforehand. Those are his costs and we are not reimbursing him for a penny of those costs. He, he knew that we were coming to acquire, had an interest in acquiring those easements. And he, he planted at his own risk. And so he is out the costs of whatever he did in those easement areas, whether he planted or maintained or sprayed, any of that stuff is, is on him. But, but he would have expected, according to Hertz Bar Management, about a hundred dollars an acre in profit for those properties west of, of Kansas over there. And so that's what's been, what's been negotiated and offered is, is in settlement.
Any questions for Grant? Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Final discussion or questions? Mary, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Strategic Goals 2020. This will be a Resolution 2020-72, Resolution accepting the goal-setting session summary report prepared by Midwest Municipal Consulting LLC for the City of North Liberty for 2020. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Mary, take a roll.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Motion passes five affirmative, none opposed. Mez and Ryan, you and Nick are working on how to get this online and let the public know, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And we'll follow up with progress reports as, as progress is made.
Thank you. Sixteen, Resolution Number 2020-73, a resolution approving the automatic aid agreement between Tiffin Fire Association and the City of North Liberty. Chief Plots, tell me what's, what and why?
Evening. Yeah, this is kind of the final agreement that we need to establish to realize our vision of having two additional fire departments come into any one of our fire districts for what qualifies as a building fire. And so in this particular area, Madison Township, everything to the west of the city and a little bit northwest, we had Swisher coming down and helping. And so adding Tiffin to this, to this area allows for additional personnel as well as more water rolling. So that's what this essentially does.
uh, additional, uh, personnel as well as more water rolling. So, uh, that's what this essentially does.
Question for Chief Platts?
Do you have other specific resource requests in the mutual aid agreement or are you using Mavis for that district, uh, for Tiffin? I guess my question, a pumper versus a tanker versus an aerial ladder?
Yeah, this is, this is strictly for, um, in that particular district on the first alarm that gets us their tanker. Um, we need water out there. Um, and so getting, getting water headed that direction as soon as we can, uh, it just makes things a lot, a lot easier. So good question, but yeah, this is, this is for a tanker. Should we need additional resources, we'll request those additional resources.
Any other questions?
Seemed like a softball question thrown out there. Just saying.
Help him out.
Okay.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Seconded. Final questions or discussion? Miss Mary, please take a roll.
Pollock? Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Resolution twenty twenty day seventy-four. Resolution authorizing agreement for use of fire engine. Chief Platts, I need your help again, please.
Absolutely. Um, one, our, our frontline pumper has experienced, um, suspension issues over the last couple of months and is in need of repair. Um, the suspension on this particular truck is fairly unique and designed for, uh, heavy duty fire apparatus. And so, uh, because of that, uh, it's, uh, the designer, Pierce Manufacturing, who built the truck. Um, the, the repair needs to be done by them. It's not anything a normal truck shop can do. Uh, and so in order to get this repaired, uh, there's only a, a number of options that we have available to us. Um, the option we chose was to take it to, uh, Slinger, Wisconsin on our way up to Pierce Manufacturing, uh, as we go pick up our new pumper. Uh, so, uh, as you can imagine, uh, only having one pumper at this point, um, where we'll have two, uh, you know, just in a few short months. Um, we need to, we need to kind of worry about what the safety net looks like if we take this out of service. And so um, trying to kill two birds with one stone, um, on our way up, drop it off, on our way back, pick it up. Uh, it gets it done appropriately and by authorized, uh, service technicians. So, um, we decided that that was probably our best option from a cost as well as a, uh, time standpoint. Uh, just because, uh, we are already going up there. And so with that, uh, we wanted to have a pumper sitting in our fire station should something happen. Um, we will, um, we will be using our aerial for first out fire alarms and things like that. But, uh, should in those five to six day period, if we experience a structured fire, uh, at least we have a pumper sitting in the fire station that we can use. Um, we spoke with both C, or both Iowa City and Corleville, both of them. Um, were agreeable to allowing this to happen. Uh, it's just, uh, making sure that, uh, the liability issues, uh, concerns were, were handled appropriately. And I know Grant, uh, has done some work on that with, uh, Corville City Attorney. So, um, that's all this is. We're hoping we don't have to touch it, uh, but at the same time, uh, should the need arise, uh, we've got a pumper sitting in the fire station ready to go.
Thank you, Grant. Thanks for your work on that one. Any questions for anyone? Annie?
Chief, just please pass along, thanks. Well, first thanks to you for, yes, obviously public safety is number one. So hopefully we don't have to touch it, but it's sitting there. So thanks, um, to the Corville Fire Department and Tiffin for the previous agenda item. So please pass that along from council.
Absolutely. The, uh, the relationships that are forming, uh, in the area with regard to fire service are, um, beyond my, uh, my, uh, uh, expectation. So it's, 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 it's a great time. I'll let them know.
As Pollock, just as an aside, I, I had, uh, occasion to speak with both Iowa City and Corleville. Uh, city attorneys and fire, uh, personnel who spoke incredibly highly of Chief Platts. And I thought I would use this, uh, opportunity to embarrass him publicly if that was okay.
Seemed appropriate.
Thanks, Grant.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution, please?
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion of questions? Mary, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Absent, too early.
Oh, Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Resolution passes four affirmative, one absent. Next item, board appointment. I wish to ask the council for approval to appoint Jeremy Parish to the vacancy on Parks and Rec Board due to one of the board members moving out of state. Anyone wish to establish that action?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vows, motion carries. Mary will have to still mark Brent's absent on that vote.
Well.
Old business.
I just got something real quick.
Sure.
So the transit committee met, uh, a week ago and got a good report from Angela, which I think she sent out to everybody. And, uh, so far things have been going pretty smoothly. And, uh, it's, uh, she's identified some areas that may need a little bit of, uh, tweaking as we kind of look at things a little bit more, but overall seems to be pretty well received and working as we envisioned. And there may be opportunities, uh, for some expansion, which will add some additional capability uh, to the city. And, uh, we'll be looking into a few other things here, uh, this fall.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, uh, Brian and also mayor for your time on that transit committee. Uh, that was a really good report Angela included in our packet, uh, for that, um, I don't know, luckily, uh, happenstance, whatever it was, I had a conversation this after, or on this weekend with a neighbor who had a lot of good input on that as well. Um, I will forward his comments to the both of you, uh, so that you can distribute those and, and bring those on. How soon will you guys meet again? Or what's your, how often will you meet, uh, in, in the coming forward?
Thursday.
Okay, every month?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you guys again.
Any other comments? New business.
Mayor, I've got one.
Please.
I think just, um, see Brian, I'm sure you'll say something about remaining diligent on COVID nineteen. Um, during that time, you obviously keeping our community safe. Please use ways to just check on your neighbors, friends, colleagues, um, just people's wellbeing. I think it's important to just reach out to folks, um, you know, you can social distance on driveway or, or different things there. Um, just a good time, maybe take a couple of minutes, reach out to friends, other folks, um, also placemates. So, um, the communications team started that, um, earlier. Uh, had one round, you know, in person, but there's an opportunity, more information, um, on our website, of course, but September twenty eighth. Um, they're doing that virtually. So you can, you know, meet folks, um, within North Liberty. So an opportunity just to decrease our so, our isolation and increase our socialization as a community. Meet new folks. So again, you can, just as we're doing right now, obviously over Zoom, um, invite people into your home and, and into their home. So just, um, use this time and just look at our broader community, um, just, just reach out to people and please check in on their wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Only other thing that I would like to add, apparently we're still having a problem with theft from automobiles and we just disappeared. Those who are still with us, I guess we are adjourned.
We're all here, mayor. We're, we can see you.
Okay, well, I can't see me, but may, maybe that's better anyway. We still have a number of auto thefts going on, especially in the Cedar Springs, uh, Fox Run area and adjacent subdivisions. Uh, we even had an auto theft. The thing is, is that people need to remember to please lock your cars at night. I know that where some of us have come from, we've ever had to lock cars before, but you have to, to, to prevent some of this stuff. And one thing I would also suggest was the fact that if, um, you can, maybe you can have a, you know, light the night, people on opposite side of the street have their street lights on, then the next night, people on the even side can, um, turn their street lights on, just, just for enough for deterrence. But, you know, this has been a continuing problem and it seems like it's starting to come up again. So anybody's help on this is going to be very, very helpful and very thanked. Anything else, folks?
It's especially important if you have your garage door opener in your car. And then you leave your car door open, then people have access to your garage and whatever things, everything else in there. So.
Anything else good, folk? If not, thank you for this evening's work. Meeting is adjourned.